No, no, she might be coming later. All right, all right, everyone, the time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call this session of the town, Bridgewater Town Council meeting to order. Can we please stand for a salute to the flag? All right, and with the upcoming Memorial Day coming up, can we please take a moment of silence for all the St. Bridgewater veterans, family members, and friends? Thank you. All right, to get us started, we have approval of minutes from our prior meeting of May 7, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved to approve.
Second. This is McKinnon and this is Chase. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposeds? So moved, thank you. All right, announcements for the President. I do not have anything specific, but I do have, like to introduce our Veterans Agent, Greg Martin, who wanted to come up to the podium and just speak a little bit about the upcoming celebration for Memorial Day.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Is this on? You hear me? Is this on?
Is it the screen? It should be on.
It's on.
It's on? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Dr. Perry, members of the council. Again, my name is Greg Martin. I'm the Veterans Service Officer for the town of Bridgewater. I want to start off by thanking the volunteers that came out on Saturday to place nearly 1,500 flags out on all of the grave sites, on the cemeteries in town. Great showing. I won't list out all the names, just in case I forget anybody, but it was a great showing for the town and the volunteers to come out and do that important effort. Also, last evening, I will mention the Boy Scouts because they were the predominant volunteers last evening, placing all the flags around the common. So thanks to the Boy Scouts, I think you'll agree that the common looks really nice and patriotic and ready for the holiday. So this coming Monday, May 27, at 10:30 a.m., the parade will be stepping off for the Memorial Day celebration from Perkins Street. We will proceed to the town common where we'll have a brief ceremony. The VFW will be supporting with a color guard and a gun salute, followed by taps and the National Anthem in recognition of those who have given their lives for our freedom. Prior to the parade, if anybody's interested, starting at 8 a.m. at Mount Prospect Cemetery, there will be a similar ceremony, followed by four ceremonies at four additional cemeteries. So all of those details will be posted in the program. We'll make sure that it gets posted to the town page, you know, post tonight's meeting. It's just kind of locked in today and going to print tomorrow, so we're going to get those distributed around town and really hoping to, you know, get a good showing for the parade on Monday. And so just wanted to make the town aware of the time, and I encourage you to come out and participate and join in the celebration. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Question? May I ask him a question? Are the councilors required to be present or?
We're invited to march in the parade.
We're invited, okay. Thank you.
All right, item C, Proclamations. We do have a proclamation to read here this evening. We have the dementia-friendly community proclamation, and I will read it into the record. Whereas in Bridgewater, Massachusetts, our aging population in the next 10 years will exceed 35% over age 60-plus, and so too will dementia and cognitive decline. And whereas since the pandemic, the requests for dementia care and resources have skyrocketed. And whereas the council on aging staff has completed numerous dementia trainings to businesses, Bridgewater Regional High School students, Bridgewater Rapid Regional High School students, library staff, and individuals. And whereas in addition to these trainings, the council on aging will soon launch a new dementia social day program at the senior center and a dementia-friendly Bridgewater cares transit system. Now therefore, the town council of the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, does hereby declare Bridgewater a dementia-friendly community to show the town's dedication to bringing awareness and support to families, caregivers, and individuals living with dementia. And witness herof, we are sent into our hands, the cause, the seal, town of Bridgewater, 21st day of May 2024, and all of the councilors have this to sign this evening, so thank you for that. Next, we have a citizens' open forum. And due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during public comment periods. If appropriate responses to questions and concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. And I just want to remind everyone to keep your comments to three minutes or less. I do have a little timer, so we will be keeping track. Would anyone like to come up and speak at citizens' open forum, please? Come up to the podium. Please give your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Rosemary Anderson, and I'm here tonight to express a concern about Zoom meetings. I'm finding it very disturbing that in Bridgewater, there are so many elderly residents who just do not have the capability to work with electronics, and their voices aren't heard. And I just left the historical commission meeting and tried to sit with friends through that, and there are so many people that have very strong feelings and wonderful ideas about 96th Main Street and other issues in town, and they can't be heard. And I just want to know what one has to do to get town council interested in changing that? How can we go about doing it? Why are they only Zoom meetings? Do we not have a building large enough for people to come and attend meetings? Oh, we just don't care about everybody being able to have a voice? And I find it very, very disturbing. And I'd like to know if there is a group working on that, if there's a petition that needs to be drawn and then presented to one of the boards. I'd be more than happy to join your group and help with that work, so if any of you know of one, please let me know. And I appreciate your listening to me gripe. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is this on? Yes, it is. It is now. Good evening, councilors. Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. Since I missed the May 7 meeting, please accept my belated welcome to our new councilors. Thank you for jumping into the fray. I have two comments, two separate issues, not issues, but I want to begin with a brief observation about our form of government, town council, town manager, as opposed to town meeting. I first became interested in politics when I moved here 40 years ago because I realized that I had a direct voice and a direct vote at town meetings, and I could even make a motion. All that was powerful, and I do regret its demise. In recent weeks, you have at good attendance at council meetings as folks come to express their views about hot topics, as I will tonight, to try to sway your opinions and your votes. These meetings are now, in effect, our town meetings, and by placing citizens' comments on your agenda twice at each meeting and promising replies from you or the town manager, you are supporting direct participation in town government. Please continue this open and responsive format. Now the issue I wish to address tonight, please pay close attention to and provide extra vigilance to the Clermont proposal for a new hotel across from the Nip. The proposal is now before the Conservation Committee, and there are many unanswered questions and numerous issues which need to be resolved, most of which have been raised by the Lake Nip Action Focus Team. Serious concerns abound, for example, encroachment on wetlands, harms to streams, tree removal, among others. Each question should be answered specifically. The key point I wish to make, one which I have made before in comments to this council and the planning board, is the longstanding designation of the Nip as an ACEC, an Area of Critical Environmental Concern. The purpose of the ACEC is to preserve, restore, and enhance critical environmental resources and resource areas of the Commonwealth. The goals of the program are to identify and designate these ecological areas to increase the level of protection. The Clermont proposal, rather than quote "preserving, restoring, and enhancing critical environmental resources," will in fact diminish and harm those resources. They will be harmed to wetlands, wildlife, trees, and the lake itself. We have ordinance and bylaws in place to protect the environment, and we should not allow variances or zoning changes which will compromise protection. Development restrictions are in place for good reasons. We, meaning all human beings, are living through an era of severe environmental degradation and consequential deleterious climate change. The battle is forever, money and profits versus the environment and saving our planet. Frankly, it's time to save this small part of our planet and demand that the big corporation find another, less harmful way to improve its bottom line. The town council, along with other relevant town boards, needs to take a stand and say, no more, not here. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Anybody else like to come up and speak?
Good evening, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I just want to echo what Sam just said, 100%, and I'm not the only one that is of concern. There may be some other people that are going to speak tonight, I'm not sure, but 100% echo what's going on. And I also just want to, am concerned about the demolition on, at 96th Main Street. There's a lot more to that, and they're going to, hopefully the planning board will look at it. What they intend to put there can't fit there. So they want to put 12 to 18, first they said 18, 12 units on a one-acre land. So planning board's got to look at that. So once they have, the historical commission will be looking at it further. But besides that, I just want to, because the public can't see my letter that I wrote to everybody, I just want to request, and hopefully you're going to speak about, the CBDS zoning. A lot was said about the R, which definitely has a lot of issues still, and, but nothing was said about the S. And that in the center of town, and that parcel on Main Street is part of that S. So I really wish that the council would speak about it in detail so everybody understands what that piece is about. And demolition is part of that. It doesn't mention demolition that I saw in the R, but it does mention it in the S, so I am concerned about that. And I just still want to know if it's on the committees. They say you can't speak, excuse me, at the beginning about anything on the agendas. It's still saying that, but they're not saying if you can speak about this stuff on the agenda when the agenda items come up. If it's the case of you can't speak about the agenda items in the beginning, but anything else you want, but you'll be able to speak later, they need to say that because we're left sitting there going, does that mean we can't speak at all because it's on the agenda? And that's the only reason we're on there, basically, is to speak about what's on the agenda. So if it's written, I don't know when it changed, it never used to be like that, but if it is supposedly written somewhere that they can't speak about something on the agenda in the beginning, then they should say, you can't speak about anything on the agenda in the beginning, but you will have the opportunity to speak later in the meeting when the agenda's brought up, that item is brought up. That's simple enough, and then we all understand what's going on. So could that be the case, you know? But I've never heard that before, and every meeting, it's like that. Comcom was like that last week. So I just am concerned about the Nip, I'm concerned about demolition, and I really concerned about the CBDS, and I would like to make sure that that's discussed finally. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to come up and speak, please?
Thank you, Mr. President. Dennis Gallagher, 160 South Drive. I don't think I've ever said that before. Anyway, I want to take a few minutes tonight just to talk about what you're going to be getting a presentation on later in the, in the agenda. The CARES Act and the ARPA Fund, which is something that started when, when I was a councilman, and I know a lot of you are new, but when that program first came out to help the communities, help the communities during the pandemic, it was, it's a well worthwhile program. And there was some resistance from the state for the county to handle the management of those funds to the local communities. There was resistance. But being a councilman, I was a member of the advisory board, although we, the advisory board did not have a vote on that. There was some sentiment among some town administrators and managers that it should be handled by the state, but I didn't think so. The county put together a plan and put together a program where they showed how they could handle that money much more efficiently and much more quicker than the state could. And I stand here tonight to say that they have done exactly that. They have managed that program, and they have helped out not only Bridgewater, but all the communities in Plymouth County with the funds that have come in. And the commissioners tonight, in addition to the county treasurer's office, should be, you know, commended for the efforts they have made in managing nearly, you know, millions, maybe 100 millions of dollars. And I know tonight, you're going to get a nice presentation that's going to go towards the help of the building the new fire station, and that's what that money has been, has been allocated for. So I know there have been other presentations with ARPA funds during the years that it has been managed, but I'm glad that they're here tonight to present a, present an award to the town, pretty much on behalf to help with the fire department. It's a great program. I don't know when it's going to end, but as they say, all good things do come to an end. But the bottom line is that, that I do think that the program has been managed greatly without, with, with resistance from the state who wanted to take that money. But the county put together a good plan, and they have managed that money, and have helped out the towns in Plymouth County, and Bridgewater certainly has gotten their share. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Anybody else like to speak at citizens' open forum? Okay. Thank you for those that came up to speak. All right, moving on. We do not have any appointments this evening, and we do not have any hearings this evening.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Lindy?
I would ask, I actually want to make a motion to take the ARPA Award Check presentation out of order.
Okay. Any have a second?
No second, yeah.
Thank you. Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposeds? All right, we'll take item H, Presentations Out of Order, which is ARPA Award Check Presentation by Plymouth County Commissioners and Plymouth County Treasurer. I will, Mr. Dutton, do you want to introduce or go over anything as they come up? I'll just let them take the mic.
Oh, I turned myself off. No, that's not good. So I got to start over now? It's good to be here. No, the Celtics are on, I won't start over. I was lucky enough to be elected as the consternation about the county managing the CARES Act was being levied, and I don't think it can be understated enough, my predecessor, as well as Commissioner Hanley, who couldn't be here tonight, but Commissioner Wright especially stood firm and stood tall in ensuring that Plymouth County received those CARES Act dollars. I passed out for you folks just to look at, because we haven't been before you, and we've been doing this at most of the selectmen and city council and select board meetings we've been able to get to. I did want to quickly run through a quick CARES Act update. So CARES Act was, we quit, the CARES Act was our first born, ARPA's our second born, the CARES Act sunsetted at the end of 2021. You can look at, just by the numbers, again, the state insisted that they could manage these monies better than Plymouth County. Commissioner Wright and myself knew that that was false. In the final analysis, the town of Bridgewater received 50% more dollars from the Plymouth County CARES Act than they would have received had the state managed it. And you can see your comparable town is the town of Milton. Bridgewater from the CARES Act received 4.3 million, the town of Milton 2.4 million. Plymouth County administered this program, and again, this was put in place by Commissioner Wright, at 852,000, 0.93% of program funds. That is the lowest cost to administer in the nation. It received recognition from the Department of the Treasury, the U.S. Congress, and the National Association of Counties. And you can look on the back, the multiple comps, the long and short of it, the total award amount for Plymouth County was $91,095,781.73, of which 87 million was distributed to the communities, 3 million was distributed to the nonprofit hospitals, and then the last million was used to purchase COVID test kits for communities that did not receive them from the state. I think, I'm not sure, Bridgewater did, but there was some towns that got them, some towns that didn't, and nobody really understood why. But you can look at the final analysis, there are communities like Brockton, 19.3 million compared to New Bedford's 8.4. You can see that comparison. So we're really proud of that program, and that really led us to ARPA. And again, Commissioner Wright was the chair when the county decided to take on ARPA, and I do want to just give her a moment now to present ARPA and talk about this project for the town of Bridgewater.
Right, thank you.
Good evening, council members. So nice to be here, and especially in my own town, to present a check to you people. Obviously, this check is for the fire station replacement project, and I can't tell you enough about what our firefighters need, and I'm sure that this will be a great project for our community. Most firefighters, when they ask for something, it's not a want, it's a need, and this is something that's definitely needed for our town, and it will be a better benefit for us as a community. I think that, you know, and Mr. Gallagher, thank you so much for those kind words. I know he was here in the beginning on the advisory board when we went through this. They were tough times. People were totally against us at that time, but we knew, we had a plan, and we had a great team to carry it forward and make sure that our communities got what they needed. So out of that $90 million, we gave back $87 million to our communities, and like Commissioner Valenzola said, we gave 3 million to the hospitals. I can't be prouder to be here. We fought the fight, and we won, and, you know, we're here standing, and I'm so glad that this money will go for a good project. Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
And then if I just may add real quick, we do want to thank Rep. Amelia, as well as Senator, Senator Timmeltie, and I know you had Senator Pacico before redistricting, they were staunch advocates for the town of Bridgewater through both programs. We're really proud of the partnership that we have with them, and I think I was remiss in extending the regrets to Commissioner Hanley and Treasurer O'Brien. They did want to be here. Again, the county did not send any CARES Act money back to the federal government. We do not intend on sending any ARPA money back. Mr. Dutton, as well as your entire leadership team here, has been excellent. Laurie and, and everybody else in Bridgewater has done a remarkable job taking advantage of both programs. This program isn't successful without the community's participation, if we can be frank. One of the things we're proud of is being local. We are elected by the same folks, we work for the same people. We are constantly working together to make sure the program is good, is performing the way we want it to. We did extend the deadline, although this is your maximum amount, so you're, I think, the sixth town to receive your full funding, so congratulations. Should there be more funds that shake out, I'm sure Mr. Dutton and the rest of you will find a way to help us spend it. We do not intend on sending any money back to the federal government, but that deadline is September 30, and, and we are in constant contact because we're local, we're in Plymouth. Of course, Commissioner Wright lives here in Bridgewater, but we're your local, go between, between the state and, and, and the municipal government, and, and we're really proud of that partnership. So with that, that is all I have to say. I don't know if Commissioner Wright has anything else. If not, we're always happy to take questions and obviously compliments.
I just, I just want to say one more thing. I'm sure Mr. Dutton is glad that this, we're getting, getting this check out to you, so I won't have to bother him anymore about it. And I know Laurie's very happy about getting the check, because every time I came to the town hall, she chased me down to tell me that the application was in. And the staff, the staff has done a fantastic job putting it together, making sure everything was done correctly. I do want to give credit, though, to my two commissioners, Commissioner Valenzola and Commissioner Hanley, and Treasurer O'Brien. I have been out for the last couple of weeks for major surgery. They knew how important this was to me, so they pushed it on through and made sure it got done, and I got a ride for Commissioner Valenzola, so I'm glad to be here. Thank you.
Absolutely. It's good to have you both here.
Thank you.
Any councilors have any questions or comments to the commissioners? Seeing none, is there any other?
Thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Allenberg.
Yes, I just have a question. Is there money for rehabilitation, restoration, things of that nature for Bridgewater buildings?
I, I think it's important to note that ARPA is, it has to have some, it has to have something to do with COVID, right? So CARES Act, CARES Act was reactionary, right? We had shutdowns, your budgets were stretched to purchase PPE and other, other items. So the CARES Act was to supplement your budgets to fill that gap. During the pandemic, it became obvious that there were significant gaps in our preparedness, infrastructure, other matters. So ARPA was passed to address some of the infrastructure and some of the long-term needs that were exposed due to the pandemic. So long answer to your question, no, not quite, unless there is an ARPA or a pandemic-related reason for it. ARPA generally has a lot of strict guardrails, and I'm glad you mentioned that because I did forget compliance, you know, we are currently trending ARPA at 1%. We make sure we maintain compliance. We didn't have to claw back any funds with CARES. We don't want to do with ARPA, and Mr. Dutton and the entire team here are fully aware of the compliance that we do have in place, the layers of review to make sure that we don't have to. But to answer your question, it's, it would be difficult to fit that under the ARPA box because we would need to have, have a COVID-related, COVID-related.
Thank you. Mr. Dutton, okay, do you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo the words of the late, great Tip O'Neill, "All politics is local," and I felt much better that the county administered it on the local level. County government's an important part of our government, and thank you both for all you do, and extend that to Greg Hanley as well.
Thank you. Any other councilor comments? Missing anybody? Mr. Dutton, was there any official, or presentation that you wanted to do?
There's a very large check here in, in, in both dollars and size. So I would, if the council would entertain just a quick break in the action, so that the commissioners can actually present the check to the council, and I'd ask the fire chief and the deputy chief to come up as well, since this is a big, big piece. That would be perfect. That would be perfect.
Let's do that. We'll take just a brief two to three-minute break, and we'll do a presentation, and we'll go back to our agenda.
I'm not kidding, that dent came because I was at the end, I didn't fall.
I know, you could sail right off.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you again, commissioners, we appreciate it greatly. Thank you so much.
Have a good one, you guys.
All right, getting back to the agenda, we will go back to item G, license transactions. We do have a petition, P.2024-022, granted. We do have a petition, P 2024-022, granting of the transfer of a wine and malt beverages license. Bridgewater 0414 Corporation doing business at 7/11. This is a public hearing, so I will start the hearing here at 7:30 PM. Let's see, the petitioner is none in attendance, and this is just a standard transfer of the wine and beer license for them. But are there any general questions from the public in regards to this? Anyone wants to come up and ask any questions? Seeing none, does anyone from the public wish to speak in favor? Seeing none. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none. Any questions from any town councillors? Seeing none. Therefore, I will close the hearing at this time, at 7:31 PM. I might have done that in 45 seconds. I will therefore ask, entertain a motion to approve this petition.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lindy, second by Mr. McKinnon. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries. All right. Item B, petition P 2024-023, granting of an annual entertainment license for Casa Agave. And I believe the petitioner is here, if he wants to come up and speak to the petition? If you'd like to.
Hi, yeah, I'm here, if you have any questions about it.
Okay, all right, good. Let me just see, not really. Mr. Dutton, anything to comment on the petition?
Nothing out of the ordinary. The relevant departments have all approved pursuant to their charge, but now it's in front of you for a vote.
Okay. Again, this is for an annual entertainment license for Live Music and Disc Jockey at the location of 14 Summer Street. Does any councillors have any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Mr. Chase over, and second for Mr. McKinnon. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries, thank you, and good luck with your license. All right, next item, petition P 2024-024, granting of a one-day entertainment permits for Fire For Effect Foundation. Again, refer to Mr. Dutton if there's any comments to make on this particular petition.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, relevant departments have no issues with this request, this petition. And as the council may know, that Fire For Effect has, excuse me, done a number of events at the Town River Landing. They've also plowed a good chunk of any funding that they've gotten through those events back into back into the property and made it quite a nice location. So again, no issues from town staff in front of you for a vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dutton. Do I have a motion to approve this petition?
So moved, second.
Mr. McKinnon, the primary, and Mr. Lindy the second. Any discussion from any councillors? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? So moved, thank you. And final petition we have is P-2024-025, the granting of a one-day entertainment permits for the Portuguese Holy Ghost Society of Bridgewater. Again, refer to Mr. Dutton for any comment.
Thank you, Mr. President, there is no issues with this. As councillors probably know, the Holy Ghost Society does an annual festival in June. This year's date's June 14th, 15th, and 16th. And they are requesting entertainment permits for each of those days.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Do I hear a motion for approval?
So moved, second.
Second, Mr. Chase, Mr. McKinnon again. Any discussion on the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries, thank you, and good luck to all the petitioners with all their events that they've gotten these licenses for. All right, so we are moving on to item I, Town Managers' Reports. I will turn it over to Mr. Dutton.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. I have a few items relative to, I believe it was last meeting or prior meetings. One, I think there was a question raised about the State of the Town address. As you may know, if you've watched, I did that State of the Town address on my own. We had tried to include former council president Moore, but I think his work and family commitments made it such that he just couldn't do it. But I certainly can't speak for him in any way. But my effort was to make sure that we did do a State of the Town address this year. We have had a couple of years in the past where that was neglected, and I wanted to make sure that we could do it and get as much information out as possible for those that actually listen to the State of the Town address. So we did, we plowed ahead, and as I mentioned, for better or worse, I don't get to control the councillors' work and family life, so we did what we could do there. Another item that came up, and actually, we heard tonight, and I just want to give a little bit of information, and the council certainly willing, certainly invited to take it up as a discussion later on, if the council so chooses. But I did want to answer some of the CBDs, or otherwise more precisely known as the CBD standard portion of our zoning. It remains mixed use. Well, let me back up. Essentially, the CBDs, there were very few actual changes in that, in those provisions, so I do want to make that clear. The CBDs, the major change was actually adding a requirement for an additional permit for any demolitions. So it actually strengthens the planning board's hand a bit, and they are the permit granting authority, the special permit granting authority under the CBDs, CBD standard now, which was the biggest change in the zoning. But I'll just run through, you know, some bullet points on what it does. CBDs remains mixed use development as it was prior. Any demolitions are subject to demolition delay ordinance and any other pertinent zoning provision regarding demolitions. If a particular piece of property, for example, is within the historic district, that requires a process through the Historic District Commission for approval. So that remains all the same as it was. Again, I mentioned the planning board is the special permit granting authority for any demolitions. Review through the Historic District Commission if the property is within the historic district. For new construction, the first level must be built to accommodate commercial use. This is slightly different, I believe, than the last iteration. The last iteration required that the actual use be commercial. This requires that the first floor be built to accommodate commercial use. Parking must comply, same as it did, must comply with the zoning section regarding central business district parking. The allowable residential density is 18 units per acre, again, the same as it was. There are density bonuses available which provide density of no greater than 26 units per acre. And those bonuses are granted, if appropriate, by the planning board for historic preservation, for affordable housing units, public street improvements, or additional solar installations, which tightens up a little bit of the language that existed prior to the change, but essentially the same provisions. Again, design standards are outlined with a little more force, but it ensures that any new construction is harmonious with the neighborhood and preserves the general style of other structures in the neighborhood or neighboring buildings. So again, essentially, very similar zoning that was there. No major changes, with the exception of requiring a special permit from the planning board for any demolitions. So that's just a little bit of background on CBDs, CBDs. So, and as I say, you know, if the council wants to schedule additional discussion, that's certainly an option that the council can choose. So I'll move along, I think there was a question about Grove Street. We had reversed, probably two years ago, maybe more, we reversed the one-way on Grove Street pursuant to mass DOT road safety audit and input from the police and fire chief at the time. The police chief reports, reported today that that intersection is performing as expected. That does cause additional traffic on the other thoroughfares intersecting with Bedford. But overall, the traffic is safer. Obviously, speed is always an issue on every street in Bridgewater, so that continues to be an issue everywhere. But overall, the level of road safety is a bit better. I will add that when the engineer comes on that is going to look at traffic improvements generally in Central Square, they will again look at Grove Street. So that is a critical piece of sort of the general Central Square traffic flow, but it will be looked at again. I think there was a question about Spring Street. I think councillor McKinnon had brought up a question about Spring Street and Broad Street, and whether there really needs to be a no-turn-on-red at that intersection. It does turn out that the MBTA has a large degree of control over what we can do at that intersection. Somewhat understandable since the tracks run pretty much right through there. Highway roadway superintendent also let me know that there are some bad sight lines at that intersection for pedestrians and for cars looking for pedestrians. And there had been in the past some close calls, vehicle versus pedestrian. So hence, a couple of reasons there's a no-turn-on-red. But again, if there's a desire to make a change there, we're happy to listen. And then finally, Stiles and Hart update. I think folks that have traveled up Broad Street far enough have seen work underway. The contractor is clearing two areas for parking, and that work is progressing fairly well. And then initial trail work has also begun in the interior parts of the park, so that work is underway as well. The total timeline of the project estimated to be four months. So it'll be a work in progress. Projects like this, unlike construction projects or building projects, projects like this are sometimes a little harder to pinpoint timelines, but we should be all done within four months on that project. So I'm happy to answer any questions on any of those.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Any councillors have any questions that they like to ask at this time?
Councillor.
Send some topics for next meeting, if anybody else has questions.
Certainly. Is there any other questions first about this report?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, any questions?
On the Stiles and Hart, I knew it was going to happen, but I kind of was surprised that it just started. And I just hope in the future we could get like a heads-up before
Sure.
the trees start going down and stuff. It just surprised me, and I got a couple of calls, and I didn't know what to say. Thank you.
We'll make a point of that.
I have some questions too, Mr. Chairman.
Allenberg, yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you. Where is Main Street in relation to the Central Business District? How much of Main Street, and for example, 96 Main, is that included in the CBD?
I believe 96 Main is included in the CBD. I can't, without checking, I can't tell you exactly how far out Main Street it goes, but I think 96.
The CBD goes up Main Street a little bit, but the historic district does not.
The historic district does not go up Main Street? I see, I see.
Just point of order, the CBDs, I think, discussion was just the town manager's discussion. That wasn't posted on your agenda. So if you all want to discuss that, I just would say next time, just have it posted. I don't think it's appropriate to discuss that. I think that was for him to give an update from a citizen comment. So just make sure, so you're not violating the open meeting law. If you want to have that as a discussion, have it as like a council discussion.
As he mentioned earlier, yes, that's fine, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you.
Councillor.
Yes.
I must say that as the councillors here, we should be able to expand upon the core item and expand outward in discussion and have it.
You're right if it's posted.
Yeah, we have to have it posted.
That discussion was not posted.
The CBD, the CBD was posted.
No, it was not posted.
It's not, that was under just the discussion items of the town manager.
If you look at your agenda.
Okay.
Item A, addressing prior public comment items, there is no posting of specific items. When there is a posting of a specific item, the public has noticed that that item will be heard. Hence, it is not an open meeting law violation.
Okay.
If there is no specific posting of an item, and it is discussed without proper notice to the public, it is an open meeting law violation.
Yes, I understand that. However, it is against common sense that a councillor should not be able to question Mr. Dutton. That is ridiculous.
I don't work in common sense, I work in what the law is. And the law is, if it's not.
Law is to present openness to the public.
Mr. President, I've given my legal advice.
Thank you, Mrs. Allenberg.
There will be no further comment.
Thank you, that's fine. And we'll end it right there, Mrs. Allenberg, we just don't want to. If you have any questions pertaining to what Mr. Dutton mentioned in his report tonight, you can ask a question.
So we are permitted to ask questions to Mr. Dutton then?
If it's regarding his report that he just gave.
Okay. So the CBD says that it is for businesses on the first floor. And I know you've been talking about with this vision to reality that there will be living quarters above the things, above the stores. However, on places where there are buildings that want to be historically preserved, CBD is totally not appropriate for that. Could you comment on that, Mr. Dutton?
Again, point of order, it's an open meeting law violation to discuss matters that are not posted on the agenda. That is for the benefit of the public who needs to have notice to be here if that's a discussion item. So transparency in government would say, in order for the public to have proper notice to be here, the law in Massachusetts requires that it be posted. The CBD item was not posted.
I understand.
Mr. Dutton will not be discussing it further because the town attorney is advising him that it is an open meeting law violation for him to discuss it further.
I understand, we will not discuss it further today. However, he said he was going to have a discussion in the future about this.
We will put that on our future agendas.
Perhaps that can be posted.
We will, if we put it on the agenda to discuss, we will discuss it at that time.
That will be posted for the meeting itself?
What I said was, the council, if the council wishes to have a discussion, and I think that would be a good discussion, the council can put it on for the council discussion, and then we can get it on the agenda and we can vet it.
It just has to be posted before we discuss it further.
I understand that basic principle. I understand you were meeting with the councillors privately? Or is it openly?
No, no, don't think that.
It will be open.
Yeah, of course it's open.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President.
Just a question through you to the town attorney. Would it be appropriate to list the items that the town manager is going to talk about?
You absolutely can do it that way.
Okay.
If you do it that way, then you can discuss any of the items that are posted. I don't mind whatever you want to discuss. You guys can put unicorns on here, and I'm going to say that, that's fine, that's your prerogative. But it's in the public's interest and in the interest of the town of Bridgewater to not violate the open meeting law. So that's all I'm saying.
No, I understand that, I'm just suggesting.
Correct.
So how would that happen, Mr. Lindy? How would that happen, Mr. Lindy?
Mrs. Allenberg, you can't have a conversation. Mrs. Ellenberg, you can't have a conversation between councillors here.
My, my suggestion was to maybe post those items he's gonna report on in our agendas going forward.
We can look to do that going forward.
I think that would solve the problem.
Absolutely can do that. Yes.
Would it, would it be?
Mrs. Ellenberg, you don't have the floor.
Sorry, I wanted to make a motion, but.
We're not making any motions right now.
Let Mr. Lindy's suggestion be taken up, but all right.
Yeah, it's nothing we have to make a motion on to do that. So I guess, any other further, any other councillors have any questions for Mr. McGrath? Yes, Council McGrath.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the town manager. Mr. Dutton, I was wondering with all the conversations about the NIP, if we could have a presentation from the Conservation Commission, it would update me. I know there's different lots covering different things. So as much as I've tried to listen to all the committees, I'm a little confused and I think some of the residents are too, so I'd appreciate that. And the other thing is, on our town council meeting on the 7th, a resident stated that the boards, committees and commissions are poorly used. So because of his statement, I looked at the boards, committee and commissions. And I was disappointed to see that the Agriculture Commission appears to be not active, which is surprising because Bridgewater is a right to farm town. So do you know why that commission is not active? And is it possible that I could sponsor that commission to get it up and running, especially where some of our Bridgewater students attend the Bristol and Norfolk County Agriculture High School? And can these upper class high schoolers be on this commission? Thank you.
So you're just asking for a report on that, Council McGrath? You were just asking for a report on those committees?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That's fine. Just wanted to make sure. Council Murphy, you had some requests to mention earlier.
Thank you, yes, yeah. For the next meeting, could we address, I think, believe Mr. Abaldi asked a few questions regarding the town charter last meeting. Could we just go back and make sure those are answered for the next? And then my second one was to address the Zoom question that we received tonight. Could we just quickly speak to that provision from the state to the next meeting as well?
Actually, before, Mr. McGinn, you had some requests that you wanted to make as well for the town manager.
Pull up the list. I'm only gonna find two out of here. The first thing is, I'm gonna say it wrong, the pathyon freezes, however you say them. The freezes, there's, I heard they're in storage now. The taxpayers are paying for that and I don't remember voting for that, so I just like an update on that. And then, an update on the.
Sorry, I'm having trouble hearing what you just asked.
The fans making it difficult.
Yeah, because of the fan.
The freezes, the pathyon freezes, or whatever they were, the third or fourth thing I voted on two and a half years ago.
So you want, you want an update on that?
Yeah, I know they're done, but I heard the town's paying for storage. And I mean, we do kind of have a storage shed across the.
Now, we can get a, get a report from the town manager.
And then, just one more thing, an update on the fire station and the Army Corps permit, how that's going. Because I mean, I used to work down the East Coast and I know those can take months. I mean, I was, I worked on a job in Maryland and we thought we were gonna be able to start. And then, boom, we didn't have that permit. We did three jobs in Pennsylvania before we went back to Maryland, so that's it for me.
I'll make a point of putting the fire station, now that it's getting underway, I'll make a point of putting the fire station on every, every agenda. And there, there may be times when there's not much to discuss, but at least it'll be there.
Yep. Mrs. Ellenberg, you had a request that you wanted to make?
Yes, I would like if reports from the committees could be presented. And I would like if the chairman of those committees could come and make a presentation to us so that.
Mrs. Ellenberg, we're just asking for any reporting that you want from the town manager at this time.
Yes, and he typically will give a brief report, but I believe the citizens want to hear more details.
I understand, but right now, we're just asking the town manager for any requests for the next meeting.
So can you provide a quick summary of these reports that come through? That you base your decision on?
I can, I can put, put that on the next agenda and, and we can have a thorough discussion. But I, I agree with you about committees coming to the council. We did that, we had to suspend that for a while, but I'll, I'll put that on the next agenda. We can have a good discussion about that.
Thank you.
Okay, Council Strickles.
Thank you, Manager Dutton. I just had a quick question about the paving at Old Scotland Links. Do we know estimated timetable? They obviously have the nice little sign that they've put up. As a resident of Pine Street, I wanted to check and see how any accommodations are going to be made for any interruptions that could be ongoing for residents of the street and whether or not the golf course will continue operating during that time? How they're going to handle the additional traffic, street parking, anything like that?
Yep, and Mrs. Lindy.
Through you to the town manager, and I think it's a, maybe a council president question too. I'm wondering what the feasibility is of the storage room over there becoming a council office with a desk and a computer and space to meet with residents if they want to talk to us rather than going to a coffee shop. So could we put that on and take a look at that? Right now, it looks like it's a big storage facility. There were lockers in there for each councillor that have been used for years. And I just think it might be a nice idea to do that.
All right, well, speak to the town manager.
Just so I'm clear, which, what area are you, oh, yeah, okay.
The storage area here.
Yeah.
Thank you, funny. Anything else? Very good. Thank you for the comments, guys. We're moving on to item J, discussions, which we have saving Bridgewater's Main Street, brought forth by Council Ellenberg. So I will ask Mrs. Ellenberg if you'd like to discuss your situation.
Thank you, and I will be brief, having taken up a fair amount of time prior to this. I believe that Main Street is beautiful and needs to be preserved, but it needs to have financial integrity to the buildings to make them viable. How to do that? The National Historic Register puts historic areas on a protection basis. And the way it can be accomplished is something which is called a BID, a Business Improvement District. As a matter of fact, Mr. Rowley was discussing that when I questioned him about Main Street. And the BIDs can be started by this, this council if we would like to take the initiative to save parts of our town and have them become financially viable. And you'll say, well, how does that happen? Well, rather than a district that has stores mandated in the bottom and residential above, okay, the BID allows the homeowners to sell to whom they want. They can sell to another homeowner and keep it as a private residential home, or they can sell it to a business. It becomes a dentist's office, an accountant's office, an inn, all sorts of viable ways to utilize the buildings. I would recommend, and I would like to see, further study of this issue with Mr. Rowley and Mr. Dutton. And I would like the council to consider taking on such a thing because I believe that the people of Bridgewater want it to be preserved, yet still financially viable. And the question is, will the council go forward with such a thing? I, obviously, we don't make a decision tonight. I'm simply presenting the idea to the council and to the fellow councillors for consideration and further discussion and development.
All right, well, again, we'll have to get some more information on a BID. I don't have any information regarding that, so we'll have.
Mr. Ruley knows.
All right, well, we'll have to get that information to the councillors. And Ms. Robins, any other question?
I just was curious what you mean by financially viable and, and through what avenues?
Okay, financially viable, first of all, you have to have a business of some sort, an accountant's office, a dentist's office, et cetera. The National Historic Register Trust allow for preservation, restoration, renovation, all of those things, grants are available, national, federal grants and state grants. Okay, and then, some of them require matching funds, the grants. So what we could do if, if Bridgewater is into it, we raise the matching funds in the community, like the Fourth of July Committee. And then that becomes the matching funds to a state grant or a federal grant or whatever is needed. And then work can proceed. We would work with designers, okay, who would say that this building would be good for this or good for that. But again, these are privately owned residences, so they can sell to whomever they want, to another homeowner or to a business.
Okay, that, that's helpful. Thank you. So wanting to make sure, understanding as well, so the town isn't in the position to be a developer of a commercial property in this sense? So are you, what are, what are you specifically asking the council to do from a legislative perspective?
I would like it to apply to the National Historic Trust. I would like the council to do a BID for the town. Mr. Ruley knows about this. I was discussing it with him.
Yeah, I'm familiar with BIDs. They can be really, really great.
Yeah.
Is, is this, this residence in particular a private resident, residence?
Well, I would, I would think the BID would be to Main Street. In other words, perhaps where the CBD does not extend or perhaps on top of the CBD, all the way down Main Street up to West Bridgewater. That's to be discussed in the future. I am simply making the presentation of this to be researched and as an alternate path for our town.
Okay, so I think it's still a little loose, but maybe if, I don't know if there's anything maybe you could draft to be more specific. A BID isn't, anyway, so yeah, sorry. We probably don't need to belabor it.
Well, I guess, well, what I suggest, maybe, you know, through, to Mr. Dutton, between you and Mr. Ruley, if we could get some more information to the councillors about a BID that she's suggesting and how that potentially would work with what we set up already with the form-based code. Is there something that could be applied within that, how it works? But I don't think any of the, most of the councillors here, including myself, don't know how something like that works. So if we could work on getting some information to the councillors and again, we can bring it up for future discussion at a future meeting.
Yep, no, we're happy to do some research.
All right, is any other councillors have any questions for Council Ellenberg on the, on the discussion? Seeing none, all right, Mrs. Ellenberg, any closing comments?
I would encourage people to Google the National Historic Trust and historic preservation for the state level. And, and go from there and let the discussion develop.
Thank you, Mrs. Ellenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, moving on to item K, committee reports. I don't imagine we should have much right now since we've just reorganized the committees. So everyone received their assignments today. So if anyone has any questions on them, please feel free to see me after the meeting. And we'll look to see if there's any committee reports at the next meeting. Go ahead, yes.
I just wanted to report that we, the Budget and Finance Committee agreed before this meeting, just, we talked formally amongst ourselves that we will have the meetings prior to the council meetings like they have been in the past, 6:00, 6:15, 6:30, depending on how many items are on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. All right, we do not have any legislation for action and we do not have any old business, but we do have some new business. First one is Order OFY 24-041, Town Clerk Salary, which is actually brought up by myself. Basically, this is the order to put the town clerks, to establish a salary for the new town clerk that was just elected. And with that, I would make, would ask for a motion to refer this to Budget and Finance Committee.
I'll make that motion to refer to Budget and Finance.
And Mr. Lindy, with, and second by Mr. Chase, any further discussion on the motions? Seeing none, all those in favor to send to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next order, O-FY 24-042, Transfer Order Capital Appropriation Items. To this, I would refer to the town manager for a brief discussion.
Mr. President, this is the second of our annual allocation of capital. This capital allocation funds our ongoing lease, leases, lease obligations and to the tune of $633,230.93. It covers the, if you look at the, at the uses of funding, for instance, Fire, Fire Engine E3, it's a lease payment. It's the second of five lease payments and it goes right down the list. So just for the, the public's benefit, if they, if the public is listening, it funds second lease payment on the Fire Engine E3. It funds the fourth of five payments for radio equipment, funds the second of five payments for ambulance A1, the fourth of five payments on body cameras, the fifth of 12 payments to the town of Rainham for the old high school purchase, third of five payments for a large DPW loader and then the fourth of fifth, fourth of five payments for two freightliner six-wheel trucks. And this, again, just for the council's benefit, this is how we generally fund our vehicles and, and rotating, you know, rotating expenses through, through this lease to purchase program. So on other capital items, larger capital items, we fund those as a one-time on a separate order, which this council has already done one. So this is our second capital appropriation and funds those lease payments.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Therefore, I'd ask for a motion to refer this to Budget and Finance Committees?
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Chase, second by Mr. Lindy. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Next order is Order OFY 24-043, Employee Liability Transfers, Contractual Payments. Again, I refer to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. We still have a number of employees who fall under sort of clauses in, in prior collective bargaining agreements that granted payouts for unused sick time, accumulated unused sick time. And we are thankfully coming to the end of that and most of our collective bargaining agreements have now done away with those provisions. But we do have obligations for one library employee and one fire employee. And those funds to the tune of $89,960 come out of the Employee Liability Fund that this council funds as part of the free cash allocation generally in the fall. So that is, that is what that is.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Look for a motion to send this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Still moved.
Second.
Right, first by Mr. Lindy, second by Mr. Murphy. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next up, Order OFY 24-044, End of Year Transfers. Again, Mr. Dutton.
For those councillors who have been here, I won't go back to that old, old councillors and new councillors bit, but for, for the councillors that have, have been here for a number of years, you, you know that at the end of the year, the end of our fiscal year, which is the, is June 30th, we transfer a whole bunch of funds from funds or, or line items that have been underspent to line items that we know will need additional funding to make it through the end of the year to June 30th. So that is what this is. The total transfers are about 1.3% of our total budget. If you deduct some of the, some of the, some, well, it's one, about 1.3%.
Thank you, Mr. Dutton. I'll entertain a motion for, a motion to move this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Still moved.
Second.
For Mr. Chase, second by Mr. Robinson. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mrs. Ellenberg, I'm sorry, I didn't see your question.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to know, being a new councillor, those monies which were not allocated, do they go into free cash or where do they go?
That's a great question. When we close the books on June 30th and, and we, we do our reporting, anything that we haven't spent, but that we have. spent, but that we have revenues for, ends up coming back as free cash. So it's the difference between what we take in and what we spend, and we do revenue estimating way early, you know, 16, 20 months before the year actually starts, and then obviously the budget is voted in May, and it begins on July 1st. So, so once, once we get through the fiscal year, fiscal year '25, any money that, that any money we took in that's greater than what we expended comes back to us as free cash.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for any councillors? Seeing none, all right, we have a motion, a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up, Order O-FY 24-045, Acceptance of a Grant, Council on Aging, Massachusetts Home and Community-Based Services. Mr. Dutton, we have a description?
This is another grant that has been received by our Elder Services Department, and again, it's for $100,490, and it goes to expand our Social Day Program specifically for individuals with dementia, by creating a dementia-friendly senior center.
Very good. Do you hear a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Still moved.
Mr. Lindy, second by Miss Councillor Strigles, any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And finally, we have Order O-FY 24-046, Transfer Order Rebinding of Death Records Book. Mr. Dutton, we have a description on this one?
This is a request for funding through the Community Preservation Committee, and the committee has recommended that the town council appropriate $3,000 from the Historic Reserve Account. Again, that's one of the three buckets under the Community Preservation Act that the Community Preservation Committee can allocate funds from, and as it's pretty straightforward, it's going to restore and rebind our death records from 1857 through 1904.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Dutton. Do we have a motion to send this to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Still moved.
Primary, Mr. Chase, do I have a second? Second by Councillor Strigles, any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. All right, that takes care of new business. We will move on to O, Citizens' Comments, and again, due to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law requirements, discussions will not take place during the public comment period. If appropriate, responses to questions or concerns will be given by the town manager at a future town council meeting. And again, we will keep these two, three minutes. Does anyone like to come up and speak? Welcome.
Good evening, at Ivaldi, Boxwood Lane. First of all, just have a bunch of miscellaneous things, but throughout the meeting, I've been getting texts from different people saying they can't hear certain people talking, including Mr. Dutton. So just a reminder, you need to use your mics, okay? Everybody needs to use their mics. The committee reorg, is there any reason why you didn't announce who the committee chairs are? Because I think that would be helpful for people to know. I don't know, it's probably going to be posted on the website, but when, if you did do a reorg, it would have been nice to know what the reorg looked like. Several meetings ago, maybe this was like, maybe three meetings ago, there was a discussion about training for new councillors, and I think Mr. Dutton had mentioned that you were putting together some training. I don't know if that's been delivered yet, any of the new councillors, have you had any training yet? No, okay. There was also, I guess Mr. Wood was going to be developing a handbook. Has anyone seen the handbook from Mr. Wood? All righty, see, these are things that just sort of get lost, unless people are held accountable for them, they just get lost. Regarding the charter questions that I asked at the last meeting, thank you, Councillor Murphy, for reminding that there were other questions that did not get answered. One of those questions was, why wasn't the State of the Town address delivered in January, since the charter requires that that address be used to set the goals for the council and for the town manager? So if it's done in May, which is when it was done, then how can the goals be associated with it? So that was one of the questions, is why wasn't it done in January? The other question I had was general, I think it was directed more at the town attorney, was around charter compliance. When there's a violation of the charter, what happens? Does anybody care about it? Does anybody bring it up? Does anybody talk about it? The town attorney seems very adamant when you guys ask about personnel questions, because the charter specifically says you can't ask about those things. But when there's other charter violations that are happening, nothing gets said about those. So there is a charter recommendation that was made by the Charter Review Committee three years ago, that started to address charter compliance. That's another thorn in my side right now, is that I was here a year ago to ask, where are all the other charter recommendations that the council was supposed to be putting forward? There's only been a handful of charter recommendations that were made, the recall, the stipend, and there were some around the redistricting. All the other charter recommendations are sitting on the shelf. I would be happy to come back again, like I did last August, and give you the report that goes through all the charter recommendations, so this time, maybe, they can be addressed. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Vali. Anyone else like to come up and speak? Mrs. Hanson.
Hi, Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I want to thank Mr. Dutton for bringing up the CBDS. I still have some questions, so I'm hoping the council does put it on the agenda, just to make sure it's discussed, because it really wasn't discussed in the beginning. And I do want clarification of what a unit is. I'm hoping that doesn't mean 18 buildings, because that's a lot, on a one-acre lot, so I would seek clarification of what exactly a unit is. And I just, I do want to see the, I do hope you do approve the rebinding. It's very important to keep our historical original records, not copies, but the original, and we have to do what we can to preserve them. And I do think we need to watch demolition closely, yes, we supposedly have checks and balances for it, but it can't be something that, my concern is that it's going to snowball, you know, and we have to look at that closely. And the only other thing I want to say, besides the preservation of the records, is that if anyone has not gone to a cemetery ceremony on Memorial Day, they really should. My son played taps from 2011 to 2015 or 16, and I got up in the morning, it was 8 o'clock in the morning, Mount Prospect Street, climbed up the hill, and very few people go, except for the veterans, but it is moving, and to hear the prayer, the ceremony, the laying of the wreath, the playing of the taps, and then you go on to the next cemetery, they repeat it, and it goes to the next one, they repeat it. So if you miss one cemetery, you can go to the others. I've gone to every single one, because my son was playing taps at every single one. The last one was always at Summer Street, the first cemetery. So I would encourage the public, if you can, get up early in the morning, 8 o'clock, they're quick ceremonies, so if you wait till 9, you're not, you're going to miss it. So I really encourage people to at least go to one of them, bring your kids so they can see what's going on, it's very, very moving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else like to come up and speak? Come right up. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Di Batista, 260 Lakeside Drive in Bridgewater. First of all, I'd like to say a warm welcome to the new councillors. We're really glad to see you here, and looking forward to your input and contributions. I also want to congratulate our new president and vice president on their new positions. I know it's going to take time for everybody to adjust, but we're really looking forward to getting to know you all. So that's the first thing I wanted to say. Secondly, I would know, as someone just suggested, that, you know, the committee assignments be made public, I 100% agree with that. I made a recommendation a few months ago, that we establish an environmental subcommittee. I've informally heard that that is possibly moving forward, but I would like to know if it's actually moving forward, and if people have been assigned to it, so, because I think it would be great for the town. The second thing that I'd like to talk about is a little bit related to rules and procedures. Fred and I have had some discussions via email, a little bit about this, but one of the things that isn't clear to me as a member of the public is the rules around recusal, and when somebody has to, you know, withdraw, whether it's a town council member or a member of a committee, when they need to withdraw from being part of the discussion. It did come to my attention, and Bob Rulie was kind enough to let me know, because I did ask about this via email, he was kind enough to let me know about a rule, a state rule, called the Mullen Rule, that could be enacted in Bridgewater. So I would like to formally request that the Rules and Procedures Committee, or the appropriate party, I'm not sure which one it is, look at that rule and decide whether or not we should adopt it in Bridgewater. My concern is some of the things that we discuss go on for years, and so, you know, basically, if there's a rule that if you missed the first meeting, which took place a year ago before you ever got involved, it's kind of difficult to have continuity or to be able to use the input of a new councillor, which we very much would like to, of a new councillor or a new member of staff, a new committee member, because the project started before they began their service. So that, that's the other thing that I wanted to bring up. And finally, this is one of my ongoing beefs, which I've brought up before, I still haven't heard a resolution on, but we'd really like to see documents that the public is interested in be put online, and with this, and I'm referring in this case to a specific committee, the Conservation Commission documents used to be online and available to the public, for reasons we don't really understand, those were pulled. We have been able to get, and, you know, the people in your office have been very nice and friendly about emailing them to us, but we've encountered problems with SharePoint in terms of being able to access them, how the way they're formatted, and all sorts of other things. And if we think that if they were just online, the public could see those documents much more easily, and stay much, much more easily informed, rather than either having to come and request them, or request them for an email, and then have all sorts of permission problems. So that's the only things that I have to say. Again, a very warm welcome to all of you that are new, I really appreciate your suggestion, Mary, that we look at and have the Conservation Commission do a presentation on Lake Nip, and I want to welcome all of you to your positions, we're looking forward to working with you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please, come on up.
Hi, good evening, Melissa Raymondetta, Lakeside Drive, and wanted to welcome the new councillors. Congratulations to Councillor Perry, Councillor Lindy, and to thank all the councillors for all of your consistent efforts, so thanks very much. I'd like to talk about a couple of things. Ms. Di Batista talked a little bit about recusal with regard to the town boards and commissions, I'd like to add to that, as Mrs. Hanson mentioned, about public comment periods. In addition to consistency in the way that information about large projects that are coming before the town are being presented and being made available to the public, because right now, it's difficult to find out, you know, what are the rules with regard to recusal in some of these boards and commissions? What are the rules and regs with regard to public comment? When do you speak? When do you not speak? And consistency with regard to those documents, these projects that are coming into town now are huge, and they're complex, and there are many documents, and as a resident, it's dizzying, okay, just to even look at the documents, but please make them available to us in a way that is easy to get to. Transparency is incredibly important. Along with this, Ms. Henderson mentioned Zoom meetings and hybrid meetings for all, and just, you know, in the interest of inclusivity and accessibility, this is really important, understanding, of course, logistical difficulties in doing so. However, I have sat in on meetings where, for example, planning board meetings where an applicant's representative is unable to share their screen, they've never done it before, and they're surprised that they're being asked to share their screen to show the site plans. And this takes up an inordinate amount of time, public's time, the board's time, and to have these meetings hybrid, I think would save a lot of time, a lot of frustration, understand the logistics, but maybe we can tap into some of these wonderful resources in the town, such as BSU and others, maybe to, to make it happen. Another thing I wanted to mention is, I wanted to thank all the people that stood out yesterday at Lake Nip and Niket to preserve our natural resources. Thanks very much, Councillor Lindy, for your support and standing out with us. You know, we're concerned about overdevelopment up at Lake Nip and Niket, and I think we have good reason to be concerned, and delighted to hear that you want to hear more about it. I would really encourage you, because this is happening on a weekly basis, not just at Lake Nip and Niket, we're talking about Main Street now, there's a project up there over around Winter Street.
It's been three minutes, can you wrap up your comments, please?
Oh, three minutes. If we want to preserve the neighborhoods and the natural resources of Bridgewater, the town needs to put the brakes on overdevelopment. If you sit on some of the board meetings, Conservation Commission, Planning Board, you're going to see these projects coming through, waivers and mitigation are not working for us, this is going to hurt the town, I encourage you to, to participate in these meetings and see what's happening, and yeah, thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anybody else?
Thank you, Gina Gascanti, Ball Avenue. I just have a couple of quick things. I'll be under three minutes, I promise. First off, just a comment Ed made about, I don't know about a handbook that Bill was writing, but there is a volunteer handbook that I know all the rest who are appointed or elected to positions are given that, so I, something you might want to look at too. What I want to say is, I'm a member of the Paxton Recreation Commission. Just want to note, I'm speaking for myself, not necessarily for the whole commission. I'm concerned that our summer program that has run for roughly 30 years, maybe more, I'm hearing it's been canceled. Just wondering how that decision was made. I'm having parents approach me, I have no answers, I don't think the commission does either. So I don't know how the decision was made. I would request that as there is a need, as I said, I've heard from a number of parents, I've seen on Facebook a number of parents that are concerned about it, that two things, the decision reconsidered, and the program written, the other is, if it's actually canceled, that we're, get out there. We talk about transparency, but with our general public knowing that it's been canceled, it just adds fuel to the fire, like what's going on. Again, I'm speaking for myself, not the commission. Second is much easier, just a reminder, Community Preservation meets tomorrow night, if any councillors are interested, 7 o'clock, it's on Zoom, everybody's welcome.
Thank you, Gina. Any other comments? Make, briefly?
Yes, yes, I forgot to say it. Janet Hanson, Pleasant Street. I agree with Mr. Ivaldi about the charter. I was on the Charter Review Committee with him, and I keep wondering, what happened to all our hard work? I don't see anything resulting from it, and you would think by now, there would be something of it, and I'm just asking, could somebody please look into that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hanson. Anybody else? No one wants to go twice? All right, thank you very much for your comments. All right, thank you very much for your comments. We will now go to council comments, and I'm going to bring a little more organization back to it. I'm going to start with Counselor McGrath, and we're going to come right around, so everyone knows.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Who's up and who's next?
It was an honor on Saturday to fall chair with my fellow Sturt members to place flags on the veterans' gravesides in Bridgewater. Last night, the Greater Bridgewater Women of today had a meeting greet to get to know them. I went to this meeting, and I was very impressed that a relatively small group could have such an enormous impact by providing food, food for the food pantry and helping families in need and giving college, sorry, college scholarships. They raised money through fundraising events, and I enjoyed being with a group of women. And I encourage other women in Bridgewater to check them out. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor McGrath. Counselor Strigles?
Thank you. I want to extend a public thank you for the warm welcome as a new counselor. So I appreciate all of your kind words. And I also want to express my gratitude to Town Manager Dutton for an amazing presentation today at the High Street Bridge. It was fabulous to be there with Councilors Perry, Chase, and Lindy, and being able to see a lot of hard work and natural preservation at work. So I was very honored to be able to be there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Strigles. Counselor Chase?
Thank you. I would certainly like to echo the comments of Sonia. I think that today, we, those of us in attendance at the dedication of the removal of the High Street Dam, enjoyed a wonderful day. And we certainly learned a great deal about the many federal and state partners who made possible that, that great development. It really is a tremendous achievement. It's going to pay dividends with respect to not only fish and wildlife and environmental from those standpoints, but it's really going to have a very beneficial effect for the town with respect to mitigation against possible flooding. And I think that for many reasons, it, it's important for us to recognize the contributions of so many in the town, in the state, and our federal delegation as well, for having put together the resources and the time to accomplish that. Certainly, as Town Manager Dutton indicated today in his comments, it's something that's been on his agenda for quite a while. And I know that he's devoted a great deal of time and effort to accomplishing that. And I think that he and everyone else involved, public and private, state, federal, and local, deserve a round of thanks. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Counselor Chase. Counselor Liddy?
I'm not going to repeat what my two fellow councilors already said, because Fred put it very eloquently. It was a wonderful event, and it was nice to see our United States Congressman, Bill Keating, there, being such a participant in it, because it truly is a partnership between federal, state, and local, and different agencies and grant funders and things like that. I do want to thank all the residents and citizens that come here to express all their thoughts and concerns. That's what makes government work. And Ed, I promise you, I'm going to, you know, work on looking into that charter stuff because I learn something new all the time. Luckily, I have you to talk to and other members of the council that know it better than me, but it does need to be addressed and looked at. So thank you all for being here and participating.
Thank you, Counselor Liddy. Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just a quick note, my family and I were able to attend the Touch a Truck event that took place at the Bridgewater Middle School this weekend. So I just wanted to thank the Bridgewater Renum Educational Foundation for that great event. Many thanks to them. When my son becomes a police officer someday, he was exceptionally excited about the police cars and police officers. So again, thank you to the Bridgewater Renum Educational Foundation for that event. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Ellenberg?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the citizens who have come here. And I also wanted to say thank you for the council for listening to the item on the agenda. And I look forward to working with everyone for greater citizen participation. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ellenberg. Counselor Robinson?
Just a couple of things. I think, one, especially because I was a co-sponsor of the legislation around the Form-Based Code, I want to reiterate that there is a lot of information specifically in the document, the, the actual piece of legislation around CBDS. And I understand that folks have questions, so I think it's absolutely worthwhile to continue to ask those and discuss those. But I think it also makes sense that, you know, we can either also maybe explore more in the CD meetings, which I've actually been reappointed as the chair of, and I'm happy to host those, or we can potentially put it on the agenda here. But I, I do want to remind folks, it's, it's legislation that has already passed, and we, we should move on. So again, I think there's, you know, other forums, and I would highly encourage folks to, to attend in that way. You know, I think this is what, the second meeting for our new councilors? So I, trust me when I say I get frustrated too about the, we can't see this, or we can't talk in this way. And so hopefully, we can extend some grace and, and understanding with each other. And, you know, Attorney Rollins is here to keep us in check and do what's, what's right for us too. And sometimes we don't always agree, but there are some things that unfortunately aren't even disputable. So anyway, you know, I look forward to, to having some good conversations around, around process and, and learning. And, and from what I do understand, I do believe that there is a training session to be scheduled, or has been scheduled. So that is something that the town has always done. And as always, thank you to folks who show up every single meeting. So it's good to see you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Robinson. And Counselor McKinnon?
No comments for me tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
That was quick. All right. So to wrap it up again, thank you again to all the folks that came out earlier tonight and stuck around to the very end. I also want to reiterate the comments that were made about the, the get-together earlier today at the High Street Bridge and the removal of the dam. It was a wonderful event that was put together. A lot of people came out, a lot of hard work. And again, thanks again to the hard work that Mr. Dutton and his team put together to, a lot of years and a lot of hard work to get all that arranged. So I appreciate his hard work. And again, it's going to, as they mentioned at the event, you know, Back to the Future is going to pay it forward for many, many years, both for the town, for nature, for the, you know, potential floodplains, the residents that live in there. So a wonderful project has come to fruition, and I thank all those involved for that. I just want to again thank the deputy commissioners that came, Jared Van Zoller and Sandra Wright, who came to present the large check that's going to help pay for our new fire station. So I thank them again very much for their hard work in dealing with the CARES Act. They've done a great job with it from a county level. And then finally, again, just to reiterate, to, you know, make sure all the councilors are aware of it, we want to have, hopefully, everyone show up for the, the parade on Memorial Day down in Perkins Ave, march all the way up to the Common. Hopefully, we have a nice day of weather for it. Our new veterans agent's working real hard to, to make a really nice event. So I hope to have all the councilors there, if you can make it. And we'll see you all there on Monday. That's all I have. I do not believe we need an executive session tonight, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Chase, second by Ms. Robinson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are.